Good morning, we thank you for your presence. We're happy to have the DeKalb homemakers with us today. We always appreciate you all being here with us. At this particular time, if you will, please stand with us and we will have our indication and then we'll ask Commissioner Kaka to lead us in, please. Kind heavenly Father, we thank you today for all the many blessings and hours to enjoy. We realize that you're sovereign in all things and work all things after the counsel of your own divine will and we pause humble submission to that fact this day and trust in a special way that you condescend to our presence, make thyself manifest to us and help us in a way that only you can. We thank you for this gathering together this morning, each one that is here. Bless our many and varied communities. Help us that we could look unto thee for those things that we so desperately need in life and as we continue in our pilgrimage, help us Father, to look unto thee who is the author, the finisher of our faith. Bless those this day who are less fortunate than we, those who are victims of disasters and tragedies around the world and we would ask in a special way to lead us this day that we might do those things that we honor and glorify and to be continued with us again. Accept thy thanks in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Ms. Kaka?
Let's place light, intentions, solemn pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic that stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, V.C., please. Again, we welcome you to our meeting. We'll let that agenda as quick as possible. The first item on the business is to prove our minutes to the last. Ladies and gentlemen, you perceive these as their changes made. If not, I'll submit a motion that we accept them as you perceive.
No movement.
Your second. Motion seconded in discussion. Men in favor, they've been on the same side. Anyone opposed, state your objection. Thank you, electric records so state before we announce. The first item on the agenda is the recognition of our DeKalb homemakers. These ladies do a valuable service in all of our communities and we're happy to make this proclamation that the second week in October is our community, homemakers and community leaders week and so we're happy to have you. Ms. Strickland, I believe you're spokesman for the group. If you will, we'll give you the floor just now.
Well, I just want to say that I am so proud of our clubs. They do a remarkable job in their individual communities and not only that, they support charities all over the country and all over the world. This year, Alabama is fortunate in hosting the Country Women's Council and the Associated Country Women of the World in Huntsville. And this is only the second time that we've hosted this international meeting and all of our clubs here have participated in one way or another for that conference. I made a few notes here. Combined, all seven clubs, last year volunteered thirty-one thousand nine hundred seventeen hours. They donated over two thousand two hundred nine items, okay? Collected money, did bake sales, did fundraisers and donated over twenty-two thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars. Collected pop cups for Ronald McDonald House and other charities and ten of a hundred and eleven pounds of pop cups. They donated books to, we have a project called the Books for Newborns at DeKalb Regional and we take little children's books in to encourage parents to read to children and we donated seven hundred and eighty books last year. Our boo-boo babies that we make out of socks, we take and they're just stuffed and have a ribbon and we paint a face on them and turn the top of the sock down to make it look like a little man and a little baby and they give them out at the help department and they give these small children shots. And they tell me that the kids will be screaming and they'll have them on them boo-boo babies and they'll clutch it and they'll quit crying. So, they really appreciate the girls making those.
Appreciate you bringing a bunch of these up here.
Yeah. Stop all the whining.
These too, we sent the trucks.
We donated fourteen hundred boo-boo babies and we donated box talks for education, seventeen hundred and ninety box talks for education. So, and this is just a small part of what our clubs do. We have an educational program every month at our meetings. The ladies learn about everything, environment, family life, homemaking skills, which this bunch right here don't need any lessons in homemaking skills, okay? We have quite a few that are very good at it. So, I'd just like to say that we appreciate the DeKalb County Commission recognizing the second week in October as homemakers, as DeKalb homemakers and community leaders week. We're trying so very hard to cultivate leaders in our organization and I have a county board myself, council, county council and the ladies that are on that county council are some of the finest leaders that we have. They are dedicated as all our members are. I couldn't say them no, okay? I just can't brag on them enough and they're humble. So, ladies, I congratulate you because without these ladies and more like them that are members of our club, we wouldn't have an organization. And we have the highest membership in the state of Alabama here in DeKalb County and I am the first president, state president to Erykah Mallas County and that I am proud of.
Thank you. Ms. Strickland, we just want to say that I think that you all have achieved something remarkable and it's very few counties that I know of, and I'm acquainted with all six to seven in a lot of ways, that have such a remarkable organization that you all have and do what you do. And so, gentlemen, I'm going to ask that in recognition of these particular ladies that are here today and we'll ask you all to stay seated, but we want to stand up in honor of what you do. Thank you so much. Good afternoon. We have a proclamation that has been signed. If you ladies will come up here behind us, the newspaper will get us a picture and we put you all at the beginning of the meeting, all of you, if you can. Some of you may not be able to.
Get some ladies with shirts in front.
We put you all at the beginning of the meeting. So, if you need to leave, you can. That's all. All right, y'all, tell us where we're in position.
It got so quiet.
We're loud.
About good. Glad to be ever heard, y'all. All right, this picture's too quiet, possibly.
What a shame, that was my rain.
Yeah?
Okay. Thank you.
It's his area.
Maybe, I don't know.
Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
They feed them. That's kind of breaks the.
Now you sound like babies, okay?
We grew up, you're mine with your head.
We used to, we used to have had the socks of them, daughters dropped them out of socks. I'm about to have one kind of thing.
Our craft diminished quite a bit.
Probably should have given them.
Yeah, I think so.
But.
Probably let Todd and the camera around there while we had a pool.
Next item on the agenda is road departments. Brock, I accept that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll be brief with my update. I'll have a whole lot of new things to update you on. We did get all of our patch trucks back on the road. We have all three of them out now, back at work. We started this morning hauling church up to District One. We're out on the other side of the southern part. Going to be trying out a new pit tomorrow. We're going to haul a little material out a bit and see how it works out. Don't know yet, I've looked at it, but we're going to haul a little bit out, put it down and see how it works out inside down Hammondville. So, I'm hoping it'll work out. Right now, we're hauling Collinsville and it tends to be a long haul. That's really all we've got available. If this don't work out for us, but, uh, continuing on, making good progress on our second round on our herb side application. Crews are all mowing. I think the District Three and District One crew, they think they might get a round this week by the end of the week. So, hopefully, if they can, maybe the other two will get around pretty soon. It's about all I have in the web and update. If you have any questions or anything, I'll answer those if I can.
If you take a roll and question.
I've got one, one thing to say, just for the folks in my district who wanted to know. I know we, we got behind a lot on, on some of the roadwork we wanted to do this year because of the rains and the herb suspensions. The church issue in our area, the pit that we use up there has gotten so wet, the church has gotten so wet that we don't feel comfortable putting it down on the road right now. So, Tom and I went out and tried to kind of create a priority list or look at some roads and try to, try to do some spot, we're going to try to do some spot charity and I think that's what they started today. Unfortunately, we'd like to go ahead, we'd like to be able to church the whole road, but right now, we're just in a situation where we're going to have to get the worst spots, see if we can get the worst spots taken care of until, until next year, until winter is quickly coming from us. And we, I appreciate Mr. Brock for going out and looking at that and the job that he's done to get this lined up. We're going to be hauling a lot of church from the Collinsville pit, which is a pretty long haul, which limits our ability to do just a whole lot. Just wanted our folks to know that we're, we're in the process of making things a little bit better, but we're not going to be able to church the whole roads like we planned on earlier.
Oh, yeah, we equip.
One thing I will mention too, I didn't know if Matt was going to mention it today or not, but we had a great truck sale last week. I don't know if y'all got the emails or not, but we sold our trucks last Tuesday and after the six percent auction fee was deducted from it, those trucks sold for a little over a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars more than what we actually paid for them when we bought them. So, that's probably one of the best, it's not the best sale we've ever had, but it's probably ranks up there with the top three more than likely that we've ever had since we've been in this state. So, that's a lot of money to turn profit on a group of trucks, so. And that's just the first part of this venture that we went into, switching to these Kentworth trucks. The auction company's not offered any kind of numbers on the spring sale on these trucks. They just say that we're going to knock one out of park when we sell these trucks we're running right now next spring. So, maybe it'll be better than this year was. I hope so, we can use it. There's always a great need for money, but it was one of the best truck sales that we've ever had and the first four trucks that sold brought over a hundred thousand dollars more than what we paid for them. Somebody wanted those trucks real bad, they were intent on getting them, so. But it's sad of, I think we probably profited off of some other people's misery. These trucks, most of them went into areas where they're cleaning up after hurricanes. I know, I talked to Russ Wood the day after our truck sold. He shipped all of our road tractors to Houston. They were pulling garbage and truckers out there on the cleanup. He said three guys were sitting on the front row that had cleanup contracts in excess of a hundred million dollars each of them did and one guy bought over two hundred items down there, probably close to a hundred trucks and then another hundred items of various kinds. And so, as I said, I feel like we probably profited off of somebody else's misery, which I don't like that idea, but, and the timing was right only too. We had the only group of new trucks that had automatic transmissions. We had, there was only two groups of new trucks. So, I think that's one reason ours, the cheapest truck we sold, sold for twelve thousand dollars more than the highest truck that the other group had in the, that had the standard transmission. So, I'm like Ricky, I don't believe in luck or coincidence or karma. I think that's foolishness. I believe in divine providence and I just think the Lord smiled on us and he blessed us with a good sale. I don't think you can explain it any other way. So, anyway, it was a great sale and I hope maybe this coming spring to maybe even exceed that. So, we'll go on to the equipment purchases. We had talked several months ago after we acquired the property at Collinsville to excavate church on and I told you then, if it looked like that's going to turn into a long range venture down there, that we would probably need to cycle out the excavator that we're using to dig and load church with. And it's hard to tell. We are, through the end of last week, we have removed over four thousand loads of church off that property since we purchased it. And we're excavating now in the area that we kind of estimated the least amount of usable material to be and it just keeps, we just keep digging up good material. So, probably over three thousand of those loads have come off of this area, but we really didn't think there was very much left. So, I'm, I'm thinking that that's probably going to be a ten-year thing at the very least. I think more, probably more like fifteen years, but we're not going to be able to expect this excavator we got down there to dig and load church another ten years. That's what it's been doing. It's an '07 model and that's where it's lived, it's in the church pit. This thing probably would only bring in excellent condition, probably only bring about forty to fifty thousand dollars to selling. So, it's to the point that I think we're going to have to start spending money. I know we're going to have to put another carriage under just right away if we don't try to cycle this machine out. So, I don't know what kind of number you're looking at for that, but, you know, I'm sure it's going to be fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars at least and which is, you know, you're spending about half what the machine is probably going to be worth to do that. But anyway, this, none of this has, has to be acted on today, but I just wanted to let you know about these things. I hope we might have some budget meetings, but we didn't work out where we could, but we're going to need to act on that one way or another.
How much, how many are talking about on you?
A new replacement machine for that will be just right at three hundred thousand dollars, just under three hundred thousand.
I might just suggest that you keep something going, get some numbers and we'll go from there. That's true.
I actually have a quote on that and it's, that's a pretty firm number on that. It's like I said, about two ninety-six is about the actual cost, but as I said, we don't have to take action on that today, but I just wanted to make you aware that it's something we're going to have to address pretty soon. Have a couple of other things. Of course, we bought this property up between Henner and Knight with the intent of, one thing we're planning on doing is putting a storage tank for our liquid asphalt that we use with our patch trucks. And I'd like to get that moving along enough where we could possibly get that tank set sometime, at least maybe after the first of the year. But you're looking at probably another somewhere around eighty to a hundred thousand dollars for that. And I have a couple of smaller items. I have a truck on the yard that I need to put a, like to put a flatbed dump on this truck, but I don't, currently don't have a flatbed truck to use to haul material on, which that's kind of a small number on me. It's somewhere around ten or twelve thousand dollars for that. And we're in desperate need of a forklift to use in the shop and in the warehouse. I would like to maybe look into purchasing a, maybe a used electric forklift to be used there. And I don't have a number, probably from ten to twenty thousand, depending on exactly how used it is and what size and everything. But those are just some things, like I said, they don't, we don't have to act on them today, but at some point in time, it's, we're going to have to. And I'd also like to maybe look at crushing our concrete this winter time if it works out where we can, so we'll be needing to be at a crusher rental in order to do that too. So, just to give you a little something to think about, like I said, the excavator and the church pit, we're going to have to act on that pretty quick.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Any other questions? Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Next item is engineering, snow and ice removal. Ms. Palooza?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Each year, the Department of Transportation requests, quote from the county, to provide snow and ice removal on state roads. We've been doing this for several years now and I have, have provided assistance to them several times. Talked with Tommy about this last week and he feels that the numbers that we quoted last year are sufficient again for this year. The, just, I'll run it real quick. The motor grader, the operator's a hundred and fifty an hour and standby rate is a hundred and five. They've requested that we give them standby rates so that if they, they want us to stage and be ready, we reduce that by, I think it was a thirty percent, something like that. We just reduced it by, so we're on standby, we're not charging the full, full amount for that. The spreader truck was a hundred dollars an hour, standby rate of seventy. Loader's a hundred, standby seventy. And everything on the road, we'll have to have a shadow vehicle, that would be fifty dollars an hour with a standby of thirty-five. So, these are the particular items of equipment and rates for that. So, I would just request that we provide this quote to the state for this next fiscal year.
Pretty much what's been being.
Yes, they're the same numbers.
Any questions? You've talked of your motion, Honored, please. Your second. Motion seconded in discussion. Men in favor, they don't say aye. I'm still on post, thank you, Brock, thank you. Back in the late, late nineties, the county, the road department did a upgrade on Canter
Road 608. It's in the valley, runs kind of parallel the interstate on the west side of the ridge, sort of from the, just above the Highlands and over that area back up towards Hammondville. There was one particular section where the road made a, a sharp curve right along the foot of the ridge and in just doing this upgrade, they straightened this section out, added some pipe and just made a straight section and left that portion just abandoned and cut off. And it's just been sitting for all these years. We've never done anything official on it. Just went down there probably two weeks ago to take another look at it. It's grown up, it's not being used. And so, what I would like to do is, is do an official vacation process on it so that it removes anything, you know, right of way ride or anything that we may have to it or someone feel the need that we have. It's not providing any real access to anything in one side of the branches. The old road is really just a driveway now, providing access to one residence on top of the ridge. So, what I would like to do is just request permission to start this process of an official vacation on this abandoned portion.
Who's that, was that yours, Mr. Chad?
It was District One, we just. This is, I appreciate you being checking on this. This, actually, I think myself and all the people in the area probably already, probably was already, already been vacated. So, this is just kind of a cleanup process. Make the motion, we go ahead and start the process.
Thank you for your second. Motion seconded in discussion. Men in favor, they don't say aye. I'm still on post, thank you. Go ahead and.
Well, I do have one other if I may.
Okay.
Just to accept the resignation of Tiffany Barksdale from the jail. She turned in her notice.
You hear Mr. Plante's recommendation. Any questions concerning that, if not, go hear a motion, Honored, please. Your second. Motion seconded in discussion. Men in favor, they don't say aye. I'm still on post, thank you.
Um, I recommend that we, that you guys would accept the proposal for the food bill or food bid from Tricky Food Service. They wanted the low bid for our cooking in the jail.
And that's going to be a little less than what we're paying now, but we went through the official bid, sealed bid process and this and had two good bidders to bid on it and training, which could have used amounts about twenty cents a meal less, I guess than the previous one, about, about ten cents less than what they were, somewhere like that. Less than what they were charging, so it's a good.
It's another cleanup process. We, we did this and we, the procedure we used could be upgraded, so that's what we did. So, any questions concerning that, if not, go hear a motion, Honored, please. Bid request. Motion second. Second. In discussion. Men in favor, they don't say aye. I'm still on post, thank you. Go ahead and.
That's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Plante. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is MR Board meeting. Ms. Glendon Crumby's term is up and the board has requested that we reappoint her to the board and she's agreeable to that. These boards that we appoint, they do a good job and it's good that we can take their particular recommendations because they do the day-to-day operations of that and evidently she does a good job. So, I'm going to ask that we honor their request and the reappointing of Ms. Crumby to a full term on the MR Board. Motion second. Second. Motion seconded in discussion. Men in favor, they don't say aye. I'm still on post, thank you. Next item, this past fiscal year, budget.
We talked about at the last meeting about the budget. We've made some, some minor changes to it. The only thing that might change a little bit from what we, what we've got here is, is a reappraisal, which may change a little bit and then our rural public transportation agent programs. Those may change just a little bit, but there won't be anything, anything out of the way. Highlight on the budget is that we, overall, we're about a, about a forty percent increase, so that's, that's good. And I got you a history of kind of where we were at. You can see that in two thousand eight, we were told of like seventeen and a half and we went down for about two years and it's taken a little bit while to get up. And so, we're not, projective wise, we're still probably a million less than what we would, maybe more than that, maybe two million less than what we would have projected if we, if it had meant for recession, but I know when that recession hit, people said it would be about twenty eighteen before it was actually over and I think that's probably correct. So, we're seeing just a little bit of the increase, which is good. They are going to do it, having included here a two and a half percent possibility adjustment.
If not, do your motion, Honored, please. Your second. Close second in discussion. Any favor, they don't say aye. You want to post a question? Thank you.
Um, I recommend that we, that you guys would accept the proposal for the food bill or food bid from Tricky Food Service. They were the low bid for our cooking in the jail.
And that's gonna be a little less than what we're paying now, and we went through the official bid, sealed bid process and this, and had two good bidders bid on it and trained it, which could use now about twenty cents a meal less, I guess than the previous one, about, about ten cents less than what they were, somewhere like that. Less than what they were charging, so it's a good.
It's another cleanup process as we, we did this, and we, the procedure we used could be upgraded, so that's what we did. So any questions concerning that? If not, do your motion, Honored, please. Bid request. Motion second. In discussion. Any favor, they don't say aye. You want to post a question? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Plank. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is MR Board meeting. Ms. Glendon Crumless' term is up, and the board has requested that we reappoint her to the board, and she's agreeable to that. These boards that we appoint, they do a good job, and it's good that we can take their particular recommendations because they do the day-to-day operations of that. Evidently, she does a good job, so I'm going to ask that we honor their request in reappointing Ms. Crumlin to a full term on the MR Board. Motion second. Motion second in discussion. Any favor, they don't say aye. You want to post a question? Thank you. Next item this past fiscal year, but sure.
We talked about at the last meeting about the budget. We made some, some minor changes to it. The only thing that might change a little bit from what we, what we've got here is a reappraisal, which may change a little bit, and then our rural public transportation agent programs. Those may change just a little bit, but there won't be anything, anything out of the way. Highlight on the budget is that we, overall, we're about a forty percent increase, so that's, that's good. And I got you a history of kind of where we were at. You can see that in two thousand and eight, we're total of like seventeen and a half, and we went down for about two years, and it's taken a little bit while to get up. And so we're not, projective wise, we're still probably a million less than what we would, maybe more than that, maybe two million less than what we would have projected if it hadn't meant for recession, but I know when that recession hit, people said it would be about twenty eighteen before it was actually over, and I think that's probably correct. So we're seeing just a little bit of the increase, which is good. They are gonna do it, having included here a two and a half percent cost of adjustment along with a regular step raises, which is, which is helpful. If you'll turn over here to page, well, first I just wanna talk about some of its funds because I know, you know, Mr. Westbrook is new, so I'm just gonna kind of go through these, just briefly. General fund is most everything other than, other than any of these other funds, the road department, we pull out sheriff and jail, it's grant things separate, but it'll, it'll take care of most everything else. That local fuel tax distribution fund, we have a three cent local gas tax and two cent local diesel tax. Most of, about half that money, or actually, the two cent diesel and two of the two cent gas taxes go to the road department, and you'll see those transfers out there. About ten thousand goes to the A R C over here, and then the remainder of it will go toward the education, they get about a hundred and seventy thousand. The next fund is the federal inmate revenue fund, and we'll talk a little bit about that, but I'm, I'm blessed with about eight hundred thousand on that. I think we have already received that much this year. That money was, has been way up above that, and it's been below that. But I appreciate, appreciate Jonathan's leadership there. We have lost a couple of contracts, and they've done a good job of building that relationship back up with some of those, and so we've not had to, to transfer any additional general fund money above what we're budgeting this year over that. And so that's the first time in several years that we've had to do that, so. So that's, it's just like when we sold, sold the trucks for more than, a lot more than what we sold. That makes me smile, and then when that federal revenue comes in, that makes me smile too, so I really, really appreciate that. But it, the federal inmate revenue fund, you can see there that's six hundred, yeah, six hundred and forty-six thousand. That's to operate the department, that just the federal, the federal inmate portion of it, and then we've got a local deputy also, so that above that, that hundred and fifty-three we transfer over. I think we'll be able to transfer more than that over to the jail operating fund, but that, that's been struggling. Next one's our jail operating fund. You see the revenue side, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, then the expense is two point two. So on the revenue side, we get a little bit from the, we get a little bit of money to, to feed inmates, not enough to pay for the food, but we get a little, we get a little bit there. They give us three dollars a day. We don't, we don't get anything from municipalities other than city of paying, which we should, we give five dollars a day to feed their inmates in their jail, not, not the ones in our jail. We get nothing for those. The gasoline tax fund, that's our regular road department, includes engineering and the shop. We've got one point four million revenue, that's our seven cent gas tax fund and some other, other revenues. You can see our total budget there, three point nine million. And the transfers in is just from other items, which is our public roads and bridge, about ninety-five percent of that goes into the, into the, into road department. And we do use our road and bridge fund if we, we have any surpluses, like the equipment that Tom's talking about, a lot of times we use that fund to kind of help us either pay for that or to finance any of those equipment purposes. Highway traffic, that is our sheriff's fund. Some counties, that goes toward roads, but we have a local law that goes toward sheriff's offices, and there's some other revenues there. So that's just a sheriff's office fund. It includes, you know, basically patrol, SRO, dispatch, courthouse security, and you can see the revenues there for the one point two. Total's three millions, about one point seven comes from general funds and other, other places. The next, next one's our tip and fee fund, of course, the landfill, we understand where that's at. We have some expenses out, and then part of that money goes to other places. Capital improvement fund, we've got six hundred and twenty thousand to be transferred out, and you rate that little small print, which I, it's three, two hundred and twenty-five thousand's coming out of, out of the reserve, we built a reserve in that fund, but that goes toward paying for our debt, either on the jail or on the A trip. Like I said, a lot of counties, that, so, so actually, it only brings in maybe three hundred and something thousand, maybe four hundred thousand. And so, but that's basically for paying for bond issues. The next ones are three R. And if you look at the revenue, that's your four and five cent revenue, which, if you see the expense side, eight hundred thousand, that's, that's, that's the eight hundred thousand that we're gonna aim for each district, so before we've been doing maybe a hundred and seventy-five thousand, I think, so each district's gonna get two hundred thousand this year, so that's, that's your money, that, that two hundred thousand. The rest of it will be transferred in back to gas tax, kind of help with operating, so hope that, that helps a little bit. Secondary road, that's monies that we use to match our, our grant funds, like our FAS. Generally, it's gonna be, we get around five hundred thousand from, from the state for FAS, and so we, we need to match twenty percent for like a six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar project, so we set aside at least a hundred and twenty-five thousand for that. The others is these, you know, from time to time have commissioners that they're gonna get a, you know, get a grant that's gonna be used, and we've gotta come up with a match, that's, that's where I get that particular thing. And also, e- each commissioner, and I, and I don't, we probably haven't talked about this a whole lot, but it's on an as needed basis, but like guard rail or anything that's a safety sensitive, striping and things like that, kind of set aside maybe, maybe twenty thousand or so for each district for striping and guard rail and that kind of thing. So there's usually enough money to do that. The next one's one mil health tax fund. We actually transfer a little bit of that to the jail to help, help offset those medical costs in the jail. It's actually a hospital, I mean, it's, it's like running a, running a hospital or a doctor's office in there. We have a lot of medical expenses in the jail, and so that, that helps offset that. I think our total, our total cost including our employees is probably half a million dollars, you know, medical for inmates, and so, so that helps a little bit offset that. The rest of it we appropriate out for various agencies. Jail court cost fund, that's that forty dollars court cost that pays for maybe half of the jail bond, doesn't pay for all of it, and, and that, that money has went down, you're looking at three hundred and twenty-five thousand. We probably won't get that much. I'm a little optimistic there, but it was actually a little less than three hundred thousand in sixteen, and so I'm anticipating maybe we'll have a little increase in it, but I don't expect it. But that, that number there is, had went up to over half a million dollars at one time and it's been down. Like I said, it's probably over three hundred, our, our bond issue on our jail's about seven hundred. So that's the reason I have to come up here at this capital improvement fund, and then, you know, instead of using the capital improvement fund to, to make a decent road and some other things, I've got paid on this bond issue for the jail. Next one's Alabama Uniform Severage Tax Fund. I think we talked a little bit about that, maybe using that in some of the districts, it's twenty-five thousand a year, and I think it has, has a little bit of reserve in it, not, not just a whole lot, maybe eighty thousand or so, but that, that can be used for, for infrastructural type needs. Next one's our, is our animal adoption center fund. We get two hundred thousand from, out of our T V A distribution, which is a split between counties and cities according to local law, and then we have maybe thirty-five thousand from other, other resources, about twenty thousand from either donations or, or other things that they generate out there, and then I'm, I'm gonna have to put about fifteen thousand from general fund into the animal, animal adoption center fund. Of course, reappraisal fund, on, on Tyler's office over there, the general fund part, tag part comes out of the general fund, and then the reappraisal is, is paid. That revenue is, is taken out of the first revenues that's received on property taxes, so part of that comes from county, state, education, municipalities and so forth, according to the, according to the formula. And so, so it's not, about thirty percent, but thirty-four percent of that will be actually county funds. Then we talked about the rural public transportation agent fund. Medicaid waiver fund, we don't have anymore. We've talked about that. The jail debt issue, six hundred and ninety-one thousand, like we said, and then the A trip debt issue's two fifty-five, and I think I tell you later in here where that's at. Now flip over to page, page six. Starting on page six, that, that tells you it's a three-year budget for revenues, and that goes from page six to page, page nine and ten. Couple of highlights on that I wanted to mention to you. In, in about the middle of the page, you see this simple seller's tax, Amazon. That's a, that's maybe our saving grace a little bit. I think it's been about a fifteen or twenty year talk about that simple seller's tax, and we've seen a little, we've seen some increase on that. It's basically an online tax, it's, it's like a sales tax, but it's, it's a, an online type tax. So that started, like, from some of these, yeah, last year, so that's, we've seen some, some increases in that, and I, I think that number's gonna be higher than that, so that's a, for years, people had a, you know, mom and pop type companies had to collect that sales tax, which was a disadvantage to them, and so this has been law for a long time, but it's been getting, getting everybody on board, so they kind of call that the Amazon thing, so that, that's a highlight that's good. The next one down there, T V A, that number's gonna be, that budget number, seven hundred thousand's probably high, that number continues to go down. It used to be a, a rising revenue for us, it is now becoming a declining revenue for us, and there's a lot of residential that, and Charco probably knows as much as anybody better, but that's, that's disappointing on that one, but that's one we just have to deal with. Another one, this, this rental of buildings and land, we, we did finally get our, a couple little rental things, small, but the tower, a couple of the tower projects we've got, one is the, the A T and T, we finally got that agreement in place, and that made some changes, hopefully that's gonna bring in a little bit of revenue as well, or end up here. And then we also have the super tower that we built, hospital's paying us a little bit on that, about five hundred dollars. But we go to, kind of help, help with that. Next page, if you look here under jail, housing municipal inmates, we've, we've put in a budget last year, sixty-five thousand, of course, we received into that, and of course, I've taken that out, since we're not gonna be receiving, we're having to receive. If you flip over to page A, that capital improvement fund, fund one sixteen, it brings in three ninety, and then I'm, I'm showing beginning's fund balance, so that, that fund has, has a surplus, and so we're using surplus to pay for that, that bond issue. So hopefully, as time goes along, we'll have enough to pay for all that debt before we run out of money. That's the plan, and hopefully, hopefully, looks at jail court costs, like I said, that, that revenue has, has been fine. If you flip over to page eleven, that just shows our, a three-year budget for our, you know, starting with general fund, and it shows everything that we've got in, in each, each of those funds, and you slip on over to the next page.
Question.
Yes.
Under insurance cost, it's up almost fifty thousand dollars this year over last year. Is that directly related to health insurance cost?
Yes, that's, we've, we've had a few more people that's retired, that's, that's basically what that is, is retiring health insurance cost. We are, we pay us about nine thousand a year per, per retirement, I think, something like that.
What's the projection on, on that situation? Is it likely to increase?
Well, and, and we've, we've got the one and a half percent increase, and that, that affects that too.
No, I'm talking about the increase in the number of retirees. I mean, we have a significant number becoming eligible for a time.
Well, like I said, when they get sixty-five, they go off, so we, I mean, that, that's kind of hard, hard to pick.
So no projection on?
It is. We do hire a, we either hire people when they're really young, and they retire when they're young, or we hire maybe somebody who's a little bit older, and then they never take, they never get this. You know, a lot of people, you know, own past that, so it's a fluctuating type of expense. It's just, over the years, that has went, that has been a, been a growing expense, so if you're looking at, that's a benefit that we give that maybe, maybe others don't. For instance, we don't pay a lot on the health insurance for families, we don't, we paid nothing for years, and then the commission agreed to, because of the cost of the amount, we were paying twenty percent of that, of that amount. Six hundred dollars that, if you, if you're an employee of the county, it'll cost you six hundred dollars a month, except for the fact that we pay twenty percent of it now, where a lot of people may pay a little bit more for that, but then on the back end, I know at fifty-four, they would pay your health insurance one month for every year of service, so if you worked thirty-six years, you get it for three years, but if you retire when you're fifty, you got from fifty to fifty-three, and then you don't have it, whereas we pay you to get sixty-five, so it's trade-out on cost there.
One last question, this, I'm just looking at significant increases. This revenue commissioner increased about the lower, almost fifty, that's employees, we talked about.
Well, they have, he's, he's had to, and this is, this is just something, he and I talked a little bit, he's, some of his reappraisal people, he felt like by talking to some people at the state were not in the right fund, that he felt, they should be, they could not be paid out of that, so that's where a lot of that is, some software was in that, so it, it looked.
Some of us one-time charge.
Yeah, I think so. And, and I've, you know, I think that's all the increases we're gonna go there on that side.
Don't want insurance based on that, but that is the cost, the increase of, of health insurance.
Right, yeah. I reassessed that this year and looked and saw that we had more, more retirees, so that's what I think. Your next, next thing is, I, I put all of the sheriff office job here together, and all of those departments together, and you can see that we are, and that includes, you know, general, or sheriff, you know, the actual sheriff Harris, and there's, there's a budget for him and for Cecil Reed, who was the supernumerary that we paid, a hundred and ninety-two thousand total, and that, that includes some office items that's paid directly to the general fund. We also have federal inmates or jail, and then our highway traffic, and so I've added all that together, and we're a little over six million dollars there on that. And then if you look at the road department, which includes, you know, all of our gas tax fund, three R, secondary road fund, our severage tax fund, we're a little over five million, so we're about a million, a million more that we spend in sheriff's office job than we spend on the roads, and that's just what pans out.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
Nice comment.
I'm sure. You, you notice he said one more question?
One more question on this particular page, but the, many years ago, we made the commitment to provide SROs and all the schools, and that was the right decision to do. At that time, we were also receiving grants to offset the cost. Now, it's, it's more than to half a million dollar expenditure that, chance of ours, not gonna get any less. I, we're at some point, we are already discussing this, but has there been any, is there any light out there as far as alternative methods of funding this other than directly out of the general fund?
That's a good idea. I mean, the, the board of education does reimburse a portion of that, it worked, it's, it's not fifty-fifty, but, but based on, on how we do the reimbursement, it works out about that way, so it's about half there. Of course, for, you know, I'm, I'm on board right now, but it, it also comes out of board's general, general funds, and at one time, there was, you know, we had a, had a cops going back in around two thousand and one's when that started. when that started. And it went for three years and then the grant went away. And so we lost all of our SROs at that time. And later on, we, it's like we do with everything else, we kind of add a little bit here and a little bit there and, and the next thing you know, it's half a million dollars. And it's a, it's a great program, but it is...
There's no intent to remove it.
Right, yeah.
The combine situation is what brought this about.
It is, but there is, there is no, it's half a million dollars and there's, we've just, what we have done is, you know, we have taken about 250,000 and the board has taken about 250,000 out of other needed items and have put it toward this very needed program. So, you know, you're just, you do the best you can with what you have.
$500,000 then is, is really, that's, that's the amount that comes out, but we get reimbursed and half of that, so it's really about $25,000 probably there.
Yeah, it's for us, it's about that much.
Yeah, it's a bargain for the number of people that are employed and doing this job.
And that money will show up as revenue over here somewhere. Now, do you have any questions on the rest of that page there?
No.
I'm through with this page.
All right. And then we come back over here to the, I know we had questions last time, one on health tax. What we've got there on, we used to, and this is a pro-bout judges thing, they used to use CD in his regular contractual process, about $10,000. And he's using someone else, I can't even remember who it is, but it's not CD. And we appropriate 10,000, so we're going to add that in at 15,000 there to take care of that. So prescription drug assistance program, we pay that out of there. We get a little bit of revenue for that, didn't pay for all of it, we do get a little bit there. One other thing, let's see, of course, starting with page 14, you get a, you get more of a line item of the budget. But I wanted to come back over here, let's see, take a dip and show you, give you just a little bit of info and I'll get it back to you properly. Yeah, page 27. And it, and we're, I mean, we have really, as far as actual bond outstanding, it's not really tremendous amount of debt compared to what we, what we, what other funds might have. But that gives you an outline of what our current, what our current year cost is, that top road, how much is jail and how much is the A-trip. But I, the first jail issue is in November of 27, 2027 is when it pays off. The other is 2031 and then our A-trip pays off in 2028. We have an original debt of all that, 13,250, and our return is 10,620. Those are our issues. But with that all, many other questions, I'll come back over there.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Appreciate your work on that. Let me just say this, knowing what other counties go through, I mean, the problems we have, whatever problems there are, the other counties have the same problem. And we're just happy that we're as well-off as we are and we appreciate your work on that. And we're happy that this just happens once a year.
Amen.
And the reason we do it now is because we have to have this done by 31st of September. And so this will be our budget passing meeting. So any other questions about, whatever you could ask. I hope so.
You want me to figure something out?
Well, that's the reason I said that. Plenty could be said, but it would be rare. Many people don't understand, most of our monies are safe and it doesn't change a lot. And so, but we're thankful that we have a man like Mr. Sharp to keep us informed and I'm here every day with him. But I'm thankful he's here because if I ain't by myself, it would be a sad thing. It would be a sad... Gentlemen, thank you for your questions. Thank you, concern any question about it? If not, I'll solicit a motion with our this budget for coming here. Your second?
Second.
Motion second and discussion. Means fair play on the same eye. You don't want to post any objections. Thank you. That completes our agenda.